And welcome to the Town of Dudley Planning Board for June 12, 2024. Present this evening, we have Richard Clark, member. We have Steve Patroba, member.
How quickly we forget.
Dan Edmiston is not here yet, but we're expecting him, so just wait and see if he makes the meeting. Myself, Guy Horn, Chairman, and William Scanlon, our Town Planner.
Thank you, Richard.
First item on the agenda is a note that this meeting is being recorded. And the second item on our agenda, Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, these two are done. Next item on the agenda, Approval of Minutes from May 9th and June 3rd.
Do you want to wait and see if Dan shows up later before you act on this?
I think we're going to have to because we don't have a majority for either of those minutes, so we'll table them for now and see if we can bring them back up at the end of the meeting. If not, we'll push them to the next agenda. That brings us to A&R Plans. It says we have two, 108 Charlton Road and 139 Charlton Road.
Which one's first?
108. Doing them in numerical order.
Did you sign it? Did you sign it?
Yeah. Yeah, oh, he signed it, yeah.
Do you have a copy of the plan?
I have my copies.
Look at that showing, though.
Yeah.
This thing in each farm, this used to be called Valley Farm. This is the original farmhouse. There used to be a barn here that actually said Valley Farm on it, but the barn was torn down quite a few years ago. Something like that. It's a good average of family. Sit yourself and explain the plan for us.
Sure. My name is Steven Bosovich. I am here representing Winterberry Farms LLC. This is made up of three separate parcels, as you can see the dashed lines. What we're doing is creating lots one and parcel A. Parcel A, if you look at the note labeled on parcel A, it's to be combined with an abutter joint contiguous. And lot one has sufficient frontage. There's an existing house on there with a barn, with other structures, and that's known as 108 Charlton Road. Do you want me to get into the waivers that we're requesting?
Yes, if there are any waivers, because we have to vote on those separate.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, if I may, could we stay with the note on parcel A, just a bit? Parcel A is not a building lot.
Correct.
It is to be conveyed and annexed with land of others.
Correct.
What do we mean by others?
We are looking at...
Nebulous term. I mean, anything is an other.
No, no. It could be deeded to the town of Dudley, or it could be deeded to the Massachusetts Autobahn Society, which they've showed interest, and I've walked with them two times.
So there are two thoughts in mind at this point.
Lot one will be still owned...
No, I'm sorry, excuse me, I'm a little slower than you are. Let's stay with parcel A. I have two thoughts in mind with regards to possibility as far as the future of parcel A. The Autobahn Society you mentioned, it's out of Dudley, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Or it could be Dudley Oxford LLC, and there are another abutter.
Yes. We're talking with the Autobahn Society, so it's a landlocked piece of land that states that it's unbuildable.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank, thank you.
Steve, what do the circles mean on the lines of those markers of some kind?
Those are interior pipes.
Okay. So those are iron pipes that you found as part of the survey?
Well, Jarvis Lansvane did this plan.
Okay.
Yes.
You know, and in the future, I wonder if you could add on the property lines of the adjacent lots, at least, and introduce, so we know where the extents occur. You've got the writers listed, but we don't really know where they begin and end, so it can be...
The other thing I wanted to comment on was, one of the waivers was the topography showing the grades going up the hill. As you can see, there's a plan recorded at the Registry of Deeds for James and Sandy Cunkell, and it shows the profile, and it was endorsed by this planning board. It's plan book, wait a minute. My eyes don't like what they used to be. 838, 1... 103. 103.
That note that you just read, is it on this plan? Because we're not seeing that.
No, I submitted it. I submitted it as a separate sheet to show that the topography in the profile was done back in 2003. I, uh, I can't read his name on this. Anyway, it's a recorded plan that, back then, they already did the profile. The house hasn't changed. This was to establish the lot shown on this plan, and everything else around it was Winterberry I guess to simplify everything, we're doing this for estate planning.
Okay. All right, so you've got one, two, three, four waivers you're requesting on this plan that I was seeing before us. The first one being A&R Name Boundaries, North Point, Date, Scale 1 to 40, Legend and Title, and owner.
I didn't hear you.
The first waiver for the A&R Name Boundaries, North Point, Date, is that just because this plan is out of scale?
No, no, this plan is the scale. There is a north arrow on it, and it's one inch equals 150 feet because it's a lodge.
Okay, so then it's not to the, that's why you're asking for the waiver, because it's not a one inch to 40s?
Correct.
Forty feet, okay. So everything else is probably on the plan, except for the scale.
Yes.
That's understandable. The topography of land at two-foot contours, you're saying that that plan is already on file, and you showed us the document that shows that.
Correct.
Location of wetland resources within boundaries, within the proposed lots, and all upland calculations, you're asking for a waiver on that, which is G.
Well, we haven't, I've been through the property, and there are no areas that appear to be wetlands, other than Wallace Pond, which we show the perimeter of it.
And then the last one that you're asking for is a profile of the existing grades to the proposed access to the lot, but you're saying that this lot is not going to become a buildable lot, it's going to be conveyed to somebody else, so that you don't have to have a...
It's landlocked.
You don't have to have a driveway to get to it.
Correct.
So you're looking for a waiver of 6B, 6E, 6G, and 6J. And we should probably vote on them individually.
And the only reason why I asked for a waiver is, per my discussions with Mr. Scanlon, I provided you with the plan showing that the profile was already done previously when they did another subdivision.
Right.
So that's why I provided you with that plan.
Yep. And if what you're saying, that this is, this is all for estate planning, then it's, it's not like it's going to be changing hands a multitude of times, so especially...
What does this line represent? What does this line right here represent?
What does the dotted line that has the word House 108?
Goes around the house, but it doesn't go around the, what looks like maybe the barn or...
If you look at that plan that I said had the topography on it?
Yeah.
That plan was used to establish that lot.
So that's...
So he could, so he could convey the rest of the land to Winterberry Farm.
That's why I was asking, because that's a lot line there in this plan.
I think he's talking about, I think he's talking about this plan here.
What happens is...
I noticed it's a lot line in this one that...
What I'd like to say to the planning board, to make things easier, right now, he owns all that land, whether it be Mr. Cunkell or Winterberry Farm. And what we're doing is taking the land, Lot One, and subdividing it, and keeping that with the house. And then we create Parcel A, which is, doesn't have any frontage, to be conveyed to one of the abutting owners. However, we have to show how the lot lines existed previously.
Right. So, just so I'm clear, what we're talking about is this dotted line is what the existing property line is right now around the house.
Correct.
And what you're doing is you're combining this existing lot right here with the rest of the land around it to create Lot One.
Yes.
Okay.
And just, just for people at home, so they know, we're talking about two lots in excess of 50 acres, one almost 60 acres. So they're not, they're not small lots.
No. It's been a while since I've done an A&R, because I've been off the board for a while, but I don't know, for some reason, I thought we always saw the before and the after, and that's why I asked about it.
Well, that's kind of the before, that's what's existing, and this is what it's going to be when it's done. Everything's going to be encompassed in this new lot. With the exception of this little lot here, which...
Is not owned by them.
Is that it?
That's the original farmhouse.
Is that it? I guess it's 150, yeah, I guess that could be a lot, it's 150 by 100.
Yeah, this is only res 15. Steve, Parcel A is defined by that solid line that goes basically through the middle of the property?
That's correct.
What does that dashed line in a diagonal above that mean? That must be, I think that's another current property line.
See, he has one current parcel. If I may explain how we generated this plan. The odd-shaped lot that shows House 108 on it is one lot. The second lot being where Lot One is shown on the plan, the dashed line going around it, that was done land court, but it's been taken out of land court so we can do what we want to do. Then the third parcel being the piece in the back showing the dashed line going down along the bearing 68, 12, and 40 to a point, and then returning northerly. So it's multiple parcels, however, this plan puts the parcels into two pieces, and that's what we're trying to establish. So the dark lines around the perimeter and the one cutting across by the 80-foot wide utility easement is a property line for Lot One, and it's also the property line for Parcel A.
What happens to that section above...
Five parcels.
Where does this go?
Combining and then splitting into two.
May I approach the board?
Go ahead, I'll meet you halfway.
Close to 120 acres, yeah.
So this plan is creating two lots, Lot One and Parcel A. And the reason why it's labeled Parcel A is because you label a parcel when it's landlocked, otherwise it would be a lot.
You're not defining it as a lot, you're just defining it as a parcel in existence.
Mr. Chairman, do we need to proceed with consideration of the waivers then, if we're voting for approval or not?
That's what I think we should do, go forward, yep.
Can we take them individually, or do you feel like we should do that?
Bill, how come we have two submission of A&R Plan checklists for the same lot, 108? Is that, is that a mistake? One's supposed to be 108, and one's supposed to be the other one, or?
139.
I only have one checklist.
But you have two that show 108.
I have two that show 108, and they have different waivers on them.
Okay.
This one here is 108. It's mistaken on the second one, that should be 139.
G doesn't match.
G, yeah, G, oh no, G's there.
Well, G is there, but the G on one of them looks like it's a check mark.
Yeah.
And the W has been crossed out.
And J, okay.
Well, check mark J, not sure what the penmanship...
Well, I think we should, I think we should vote all four of them, and that way they're recovered.
Just a question, Mr. Chairman, if I may, on G, location of wetland resource area boundaries, does this somehow fall under the purview of the Conservation Committee, Commission?
Well, it's, it's on here because if you're doing a lot that's relatively small and there's wetlands on it, you want to make sure there's enough upland to build upon. There's, they're not building on Parcel A, and Parcel B already has an existing home, so...
All right, so you're saying in effect that the intent is not to build on it, therefore that's a moot point. All right, we'll accept that explanation.
I mean, it's not typical that you see an A&R lot come to you with 60 acres on it.
Just want to clarify, the two A&R lists, is one of these two A&R lists for actually the property on the other side of the street that we're getting ready to do?
No, it's, that's on a separate sheet behind it, number 139.
To go behind it. Yeah, well, then, my question would be, why is D, Book and Page on one of these two forms, 50775-240, but on the other one, it's 5775-230? Oh, so this is all the, these are these, like, five...
Multiple parcels.
So you need the two pages to get them all in?
That's what's listed on the plan here, all these plans, Book and Pages.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
If I may make a comment, they should leave me a little more space.
Yeah, yeah.
Not that this occurs a lot, but...
Right, right.
It's kind of a mess because of that reason.
Five or six parcels being...
Ready for a motion? Yeah, so you want to, on the first one, on 6B, the only thing we're going to be waiving is the scale from 1 to 40 to...
1 to 150.
150, I think he said.
Yeah, 150.
1 to 150, so, somebody like to make a motion that we waive the scale requirement on the drawing from one inch equals 40 feet to one inch equals 150 feet?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we accept the change from one inch equals 40 to one inch equals 150 feet as requested on the waiver.
So we have a motion made, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Mr. Edmiston, do you want to vote on this one, or do you want to...
I'm going to abstain, I missed everything.
Wait for the next one, sure. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Well, three want to abstain.
Yeah, Mr. Edmiston's going to abstain. All right, so the next one we would be looking at granting a waiver on is the topography of land in two-foot contours, this would be 6E. And while we are granting this waiver, there is a plan on file at the Registry of Deeds that the applicant has provided for us, showing that there, and it was approved by this board with the two-foot contours in place. So we're just waiving it for this particular plan, because there's already a plan in place with the contours.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we waive E, the topography of the land that's contour interval of two feet, as there is an existing plan already in place.
Here we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, three yes, one abstention. The next one we'll be looking to get a waiver on is...
G.
G, location of the wetland resources.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we agree to the waiver of G, location of wetland resources, as, well, as this is not a buildable lot.
Can we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, three yes, one abstention. The last one is 6J, a profile of existing grades of the proposed access to the lot. This is not, the proposed access to the lot is not changing, the new lot that is, the new parcel that's being created does not have access, so as the representative said, it'll probably go to an abutter.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we agree to grant waiver of G, profile of the existing grade of the proposed access to the lot, and as far as there is no access to the lot.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, three yes, one abstention. Now we need a motion to approve for Winterberry Farms LLC located at 108 Charlton Road in WNS.
Do you need to sign off?
But we need to, we need to approve it first.
Okay, okay, not the entire A&R. All right, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we accept the, or approve the A&R as presented for 108 Charlton Road, Winterberry Farms.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Put the motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, three yes, one abstention. Okay, so we can sign this one, and then we can start.
Sign two paper copies?
Two paper copies in the mail, okay. So I got one paper copy here, and...
They signed one of these, do I get any of the copies back? I know that, but I haven't signed that one, too.
Oh, no.
You signed a paper copy. We don't need that one signed.
No, I'd like to get that one signed, too, for the attorney, for the owners.
You have to sign this one.
Did you sign the mail out?
Yes.
Like I said, the attorneys, the owner.
Yes. So we're going to start with the next A and R plan for tonight. This is number 139 Charlton Road, Winterberry Farms, it's the same applicant.
That's what I was asking. You said there was one. And I was trying to find my binder.
I didn't see it.
You got a checklist?
Is it there? I see one. And the other checklist is 139 and 108.
I just want to make sure I'm seeing it. So it looks like this should have been on the back of, are these mixed up? Because this is parcel A and it's on the back of 139.
Laura, can you make a copy of this checklist?
Yes, I can. So these look like they got mixed up.
Could be.
How many copies of this do you want, Bill?
Uh, five. It just might be because it got written through the copy machine for a two-sided copy in the wrong place.
No, no, no. Over here, it says owner of written, deed book, 50775, page D40. I think I saw that on Monday.
A and R checklist.
She's going to bring us the new checklist.
Look at this, right there. First A and R checklist says 108 Charlton Road. It says 50775, deed reference, this A and R.
That's correct. That A and R should be 139 Charlton Road. The address is shown wrong on the acceptance by the Fudley Planning Board. Because it's one deed for the entire piece and we're splitting it into two lots.
Right, so I think this A and R checklist should say 139 Charlton Road.
You might be right. Let's see what she brings us that says 139 and see if it matches up.
The second of these should be 139.
We're going to wait and see what Laura brings us back to see if it matches one of these two.
Fortunately, the waivers requested are identical on both of them, so it's not like we just.
That's why I said we should vote them all anyways. Keep your safety in mind.
It's the same thing. It says 108.
All right, so we've got that. It's just got the wrong number on it.
Okay.
We're going to call this 139, I guess, is it?
Yep, so the one that says 5775, deed book, claim 240 should be 139. So we can make that change in our.
That's 50775/240, right?
Yep. Two, three, four, same. Same waivers. Okay. All right, so could you explain this plan to us, sir?
Yes. I'm here representing Winterberry Farms LLC, who owns the property as shown as Lot 2 and Lot 3. And what we're proposing to do is subdivide that parcel into two lots, Lot 2 and Lot 3. There are 25, Lot 2 is 25 plus or minus acres and Lot 3 is 19.7 acres. It's in a residential 15 zone. The area required is 15,000 square feet. The frontage minimum 100 feet. And the setbacks at this point are irrelevant, but they're shown on the plan. If the board has any questions, I'd be glad to entertain them.
So on this plan, you should also show a lot A. Is that included in this plan or?
No. You can see the dark line going around this plan. The dark line with the bearings and distances and the abutters are shown. This.
Lot A is where he has his existing house, right?
Let me say this, that Lot A is 139 Charlton Road. But because we're taking this land here, we show that just so you know that's not involved in this. This is for Lot 2, which is shown in dark black going around and Lot 3 going around. And he shows a portion of, matter of fact, parcel A goes on the other side of.
What else? Lot 2 and 3 are being cut out of one large parcel here that includes Lot A, correct?
No. Lot A is separate.
Lot A, oh, Lot A's always been separate?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I have a plan here that I can show you.
No, no, because I was only going to question why you didn't show the position of the existing house.
Lot A doesn't.
House building, but since it's a.
Lot A doesn't change, but because the deed says it's 139, what we're doing is taking this portion of the land and cutting it into two lots, Lot 2 and 3. However, Lot A has been endorsed by the Planning Board back when, and he just shows it there because it's the same deed.
Okay.
Okay, so on these?
What is the, what is the plan for these lots in here? Developed? Someone's going to put a house on these lots? Is that the intent?
Estate planning.
Estate planning?
Correct. Yes, they could be developed at some point in time. I can't say that they wouldn't have.
You got a lot of wildlife you're going to be dislocating here, I think.
It's all fields.
It's all fields, but you got a lot of Canadian geese out there on a regular basis, along with a lot of turkeys, and I suspect there are some four-legged creatures as well. I mean, just casually driving by, you'll see a flock of geese there at any time of day.
And they're more of a nuisance.
Oh, yeah, they're definitely a nuisance, but.
I coached Bob Warner and they used to go poop all over the fields that we practiced in, and we couldn't practice there because of that poop. But anyway, it's two.
They had pooped in a septic. Do you know we have water and sewer going through there at all?
I believe so. I believe so.
We do?
Yeah.
Where?
On Charlton Road?
Not in that section. I'm almost positive it didn't go up that far.
That far.
That's a low point. They'd have to put a pump station in probably so.
There's all that ledge. Charlton Road, when you come down here, there's a massive area of ledge that had to be blasted to put the road through. I think it continues up there.
So the estate plan is to have the flexibility of selling these individual lots at some point in future, should whoever is the recipient of the estate decide to do so? Is that a fair comment to make?
As we age.
I'm ahead of you on that one.
As we age, we want to do our estate planning. So as you're older and you have opposite on the other side of the road, you have a larger state with pens for horses and you have horses and you have bonds and it gets a certain point where you say enough is enough. They could sell that piece across the street, 108 Charlton Road, and build a smaller house on this piece. That's why we're doing this now.
When you're asking for the same waivers, the map that was on, that was already filed at the Registry of Deeds with the two-foot contours, did it cover this parcel also or just?
No, but I submitted a topographical plan in the submission that showed the grades and has missed the, is it Clark? I can't see that. He's driven by there many times. It's a field that they mow for hay.
Yeah. No, it's well cared for. I mean, I'm surprised to see the frequency with which they do mow that. I would ask though, when we get to G here, location of wetland resources, there's a pond not that far away. Where are we with that? You're looking to waive that?
We show the pond, we show the pond abutting.
I know you show the pond, but looking at the proximity of these lots to that pond, you're looking to waive location of wetlands? There's no additional wetlands, just the pond? Is that what we're saying here?
I'm not a wetland scientist, but I've been there before and the fields look pretty dry to me.
And again, the delineation of the wetlands is only to make sure that you have enough upland to build in these lots.
And, well, these are different. These are buildable lots. I mean, we're looking at building on these. That's why I would defer to conservation frankly.
But they're crazy big lots. I mean, like if you were going to put a single house on a 25-acre lot, you definitely got enough upland to build on.
Well, I would love to think that one house on a 25-acre lot, that sounds pretty good to me. I don't know if I'm going to stay with that though.
If you stand here at the road and you look out across this field, you can look an awful long distance before you see anything even remotely, you know, looking like wetlands. And to your point, if this gets subdivided further, because there's 800 feet of frontage here and you only need 100 feet per lot in res 15, if this were to be subdivided further, then you could start to make the argument that wetlands comes into play and conservation should be involved. For instance, especially if, you know, it's this lot here, the one that's closest to this area down here.
One comment I'd like to make, I've done a lot of work for farmers and they're not going to put their tractor down to the wetlands because the tractor will sink and then they're going to pull it out. So whatever's mowed there is pretty much all dry land because he mows it continuously and you could see the area that's there.
And actually, I think tree line's actually up further. I don't think he's, he's mowing this all the way back.
Yeah, it's 1,300 feet. I mean, he's probably mowing back 500, 600 feet.
Right. Because I don't, I don't recall this, this field being wide open down to this much waterfront down here.
It's pretty flat as you get down towards the pond. It doesn't take too much.
Well, when you come out of the woods here, because I've done it as a kid.
Was it Michael?
I walked out of here. You can't, you couldn't see these houses. There's this big high point right in.
Yeah. But on that side, the other side, what is it? Michael Road, is that the name of the road? The other side of the pond? Michael something or other? Michael Lee?
Excuse me, if you could give them the sheet, which I have one here if the board wants it, and I didn't make it part of the submission. The topography of the area should look like this.
They have that, Steve. They have that in their binder.
Oh, all right.
There you go. These are these hilltops right here that block you view when you come out. When you're standing here, you can't see this.
What is this?
This is all, I mean, I don't want to go as far as say I drive, but it's pretty.
All right, so the first waiver, number 6B, is asking for the scale to be waived from 1 inch equals 40 feet to 1 inch. This one's at 1 inch equals 120 feet, I believe?
Yes.
Somebody like to make a motion for that waiver?
Mr. Chairman, there's no way we can combine these. Can't just, like, make a motion to approve waivers and go, you know, just by a letter?
Somebody might have a problem with one of the waivers and not a problem with the rest though.
No.
I would recommend, or my recommendation, Mr. Chairman, would be since we just set precedent for this property by voting for all four waivers across the street, could be an easy one is to vote for all four on this side as well. Unless it's an objection, I mean.
Whatever's the board's vote here?
All right.
Make the motion, Mr.?
Make sure I'm going to get them all here.
6B?
Yep. I'd like to make a motion that we approve waivers requested for 139 Charlton Road, waivers being as follows. 6B, A and R boundaries, 1 inch equals 40 inch.
40 feet.
6E, photography. 6J, profile of existing grades of proposed access to the lot. And?
What was the other one?
G.
6G. I'm sorry, I didn't see that one. Because my mind has it. 6G, location of wetland resource area boundaries within proposed lots.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to second.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Abstain.
One abstention, so three yes, one abstention. Mr. Clark?
We haven't voted on the plan yet. We haven't voted on the plan yet.
Not if you're standing, you don't sign it.
Okay, the plan as a whole, no?
Now we need a motion for the plan.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the A and R plan for 139 Charlton Road as presented and with the waivers as voted on.
Okay, we have a motion for the plan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
One abstention. Okay. You want four copies of the paper again and one Mylar?
I have one Mylar and the two copies.
Two copies or four? We gave you four of the paper last night.
Yeah, we took two.
No, you keep two.
And you took two.
So, yeah, we're doing four copies.
Just checking.
Here they are right now. So the board has the unnecessary copies? So the board has their necessary copies?
We need two, you get, you have two?
We have one right there and we have one up there, yep.
Here, here's the other.
Bill Keefe, check out one of all of our signatures. I don't see anything blue on it. I was signing it blue.
Got three.
So Bill, you have two copies of this, correct? You have two copies of this paper copy?
You get the matter?
I got the mark. See, we agree for the Celtics?
Okay, next item on our agenda, complete streets discussion with guest Rebecca Milton. And we don't see Rebecca here, so we'll just.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll just table that to the next meeting and see where she comes. We'll extend the invitation for the next meeting if she would like. Okay, discussion of the master plan, consideration of selection of members to the master plan committee. So I guess my first question for Bill would be, would we select members to the committee even if we don't know we're gonna get the grant or not? Or do we wait till we get notification that the grant is imminent? And then we go looking for the people or do we try to line them up in ahead of time?
I think it would be good to, you know, line them up if you can. That way you'd be ready to go once the grant is awarded.
Awarded, okay.
Obviously, if you don't get the grant, you could still meet, but you wouldn't have a consultant on board to help you with the plan, so.
Be able to progress where we need to be.
Right.
I think the hope for me, Mr. Chairman, would be if we didn't get the grant this go around, we would next. We'd be back in the game hopefully and then the committee, if you will, so identify that advance of that might help us somewhere along the way and perhaps, as I understand it, I think the recommendation was five to seven members for this committee.
I believe the application said the planning board had agreed to create a committee. So that's already gone in. It's just a matter now of following through on that.
Okay, can we post it on the website that we're, we're looking for people and ask if?
Yeah, if you want to.
Is any individuals that come forward and then we could do like a interview process to see if there's any people with stellar?
I guess my thought would be, you know, would you like to invite members from other boards to be on the committee? And if so, which boards? And then how many citizens at large would you like to have on the committee?
So we don't have to name specific people, but kind of name where those people are coming from?
Yes. So if you wanted a selectmen on the committee, for example, you could ask them to appoint somebody or the Conservation Commission or Economic Development Committee, whatever makeup you thought would be appropriate.
But their appointee wouldn't necessarily be another selectmen. It could be someone as a resident as opposed to.
That would be up to them.
Up to them, okay. Well, Mr. Chairman, if you're looking for someone to come forward, I think I'll put a foot in the ground and go forward with that then.
You were at one of the meetings, Bill, uh, excuse me, Mr. Clark, but I said I think we were gonna have to beat you off with a stick on this, on this project.
Well, you might catch me loitering, I guess. I'm not sure. We'll see how that goes.
Okay.
So would you like, I guess you could go through the various town boards. It'd be like selectmen, finance, conservation, recreation, development, Board of Health. Depending on which boards you felt would be appropriate to have representation.
It's the board's pleasure. I don't think, I don't think it's a bad idea.
Yeah, I think you should, I think you should have at least one member of the selectmen.
Or they're, or they're designated?
Right. And at least one member of the planning board, one to designate, which, I mean, I know that Richard already faulty for the, but I mean, we're just kinda talking about which boards or places these people are coming from right now.
I think economic development.
Yeah. So that's, that's three already. Firstly, health. Nothing against conservation, but I don't know if we need conservation at that point.
I would say zoning for conservation possibly.
What are your commission?
I think planning, planning kinda covers.
The zoning falls under the planning board more or less. We write the zoning.
We're building.
I was thinking about appeals, but you're right.
What's that, what's that committee that we've got for the parks and the recreation?
Open space and recreation.
Open space and recreation. My vote would be to have somebody.
Now, the park commission.
Whatever.
There, there were five members identified in the two thousand master plan. And I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I think some of them might still be in, in town.
Two of them are, yeah.
Two of them are. I know we've wanted, maybe one of them perhaps as a part of the, I mean, one part of this is the history of the town, if you will, and they certainly would be able to bring some of that. And I think to the four, given their past experience with this.
Speaking of history, does it, does the historical society have, have a say in this at all or?
Uh, probably not a prominent role.
Okay.
But, you know, could have input into it.
Okay.
Well, if you went with seven, we already figured out probably four boards. So maybe we should think about the other three being left open to members of the public. Maybe a representative of the business community. And then just maybe look for volunteers from the general public for the last, you know.
Yeah. Does, does the school committee ever get involved in, in a?
Usually no. The master plan doesn't really cover school facilities.
Okay.
Finance committee maybe would be appropriate because obviously there's financial implications to the plan. Capital facilities, et cetera.
And what about like the emergency or, or safety or emergency services like police, fire?
They typically have their own plans.
They have their own plans, okay.
Good point. Public safety is, well, that's a, a big part of this is transportation. And, you know, the, that kinda falls into the police aspect of things in terms of how people move around town and where the problems might exist.
Where the highway commission is, which also falls under the, under the auspice of the board of selectmen.
Right, well, there's the highway commissioners. So effectively we've covered them, I suspect.
So would we say we're somewhat in agreement that we're talking planning, selectmen, EDC, and parks?
That's four.
If we don't think there are any other boards to add to that, then we would just what? Ask for public?
Input.
Input, yeah.
Have three advertised.
Volunteers for three members of the public.
Maybe we could approach, we could approach the, the members, one of the two, you know, see if there's any interest from any of the members that were in the previous one.
Yeah.
Because they would have, they should have wealth and knowledge that they could share.
We didn't listen to your advice before. Would you like to come back and give it again?
Twenty years later.
Oh, that was, that was cold.
So would you like to advertise those three citizens at large seats and?
See what happens.
Get some volunteers?
Yeah. See what's going on.
And send letters out to those four boards asking if they were to appoint somebody?
Yeah.
Okay.
You seem to know Mark pretty well, Mark.
Mark Mazzarotti, yeah.
Yeah, Mark Mazzarotti. He could probably be a good representative of local business, right? I would say.
I mean, he's a realtor?
Right. But I think he's volunteered before. That's why.
Well, Mazzarotti?
Mark Mazzarotti.
Yeah, he was on the last one.
He was on the planning board for a while.
Yeah.
So.
So was it Mr. Brier?
Right.
Yeah.
And he's a local realtor, so he knows the town very well. He's on the EDC now.
Well, we got plenty of time for picking the actual.
You do.
But I think if you're just looking for a blueprint, this is what we would agree on, I guess.
Yeah, it's a start, right?
Yeah.
That's what we wanted to do.
Okay.
Okay.
I also put in your binders the scope of services. Your business tab. You had seen this before, I think, or at least had known about it. So this is the, the budget for the plan. Has broken down into the various elements of the plan. Total cost is a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. We've applied for a hundred and thirty thousand of grant money. And Central Mass Regional Planning Commission will provide a fifteen thousand dollar cash match for the, under the district local technical assistance program. So there's no actual town money going into this plan. And then the second item is the memorandum of understanding between CMRPC and the town. Sort of designating CMRPC to be the consultant for the plan. And that they are contributing their, their match to the project. So, um, this is what's been submitted to the state under the Community One Stop for Growth Program.
And you were able to get it in on time?
Yes.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Alright, under standard business, we have discussions, status reports on finishing construction of and acceptance of uncompleted, unaccepted subdivision streets including Pierpont Estates, Rocky Hill Estates, Country View Estates, Eisenhower Drive, Tobin Farm Estates, Lion Estates. Request for one-year extension, it says, and Sophie's Way. So did Lion Estates come with a, with a one-year extension?
Yes. Ford, did you put that extension request in the binders?
Yes.
Yeah.
Under standard business, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Okay, I see it. Thank you.
Digressing a little bit here. Looking at the Town and Dudley Rules and Regulations governing the subdivision of land, which is, I know we deal with our rules and regulations, subdivision rules and regulations, but this is apparently a more substantial document. Porting from page, we're looking at page twenty-eight of that document, progress and final as built. There is a progress as built that is apparently indicated, or as I read it, is indicated here. And I don't know that we have been, as a matter of policy, been asking for those, but since it is identified in the town rules and regulations, I suspect it's something we should be doing. If not, well, I don't know if we can do it retroactively, but at least in the future at least. And there are two, there are two indicated on page twenty-eight. There's the progress as built and on twenty-nine there is the as, final as built. So there are two documents, if you will. And, uh, again, whether we can go back retroactively or whether we just have to look at that going forward as future business, I'm not sure the proper mechanism by which we should operate. Maybe Mr. Scanlon has some thoughts on that.
Well, going down the list, Pierpont is ready to commit for their acceptance in the fall. So it's kind of.
So the in progress is moot point as far as that's concerned.
Rocky Hill Estates, you know, has been, it was in nineteen eighty-six, I think.
In progress for thirty years.
No wine before it starts.
So I don't think we could, we could get one there. Country View Estates, we are working on the ASBO plan for that.
Right.
That's been completed for quite a while.
How's that coming along? You should have some numbers on this.
So, um, I talked to Jeff Walsh this week about a couple of these projects and we, he's going to, for Country View, he's going to get together with the highway superintendent to review the status of the subdivision and identify if any work needs to be done. We were then going to add that to the sewer pump station estimate that we have from the water and sewer department. And then invite the residents to a meeting to talk about a betterment.
Actual numbers.
To complete that project.
Now Jeff Walsh is no longer part of the town administration, correct?
That was Jeff Murray.
Jeff Murray, okay.
Jeff Walsh is with Graves Engineering. So.
I gotta watch my family trees here.
We have a, a contract with a surveying firm to do the ASBO plan for that project. So that will be finished once we complete the work on that project. For Tobin Farm, um, the issue there is that we need to do a filing with the Conservation Commission. So we need to prepare a notice of intent for the work in that subdivision. And so Graves has suggested that they sub out that work to another firm in order to prepare that filing to the Conservation Commission. Once that filing is prepared, then we would go out to bid for the entire, you know, improvement of that subdivision. So my guess is we probably would be able to get the notice of intent and order of conditions from the Concom summer or early fall. Probably put the bid package together in the fall and then go out to bid in the spring for the work. So that would be kind of a, a rough timeframe for how that project would come together.
So that's another year.
Yeah, the meter's taken, too. The prices aren't going down.
Right.
Cause I get questions from people living there, so. And wondering what happened to this whole thing. Why did it kinda die on the vine or whatever?
It got hung up on the NOI.
Yeah.
So we needed, we need to come up with a way to get that done. So the cost of that would then become part of the betterment. So the, that the residents have.
As Lions, the cost doesn't go over what, what was agreed to?
Correct.
If, if the cost goes over that, they'd have to go back to town meeting and re-vote it?
Right.
Okay.
That's a rock and hard place.
Mm-hmm.
That's unfortunate.
So Lions Estates, um, you have the quest, the request for the one-year extension. Tom Bervine came in today. That subdivision is, he's planning on bringing that to town meeting for acceptance in the fall.
This fall or next fall?
This fall. Uh, the fall, town meeting. He's got, I think, most of the houses built and others are sort of in various stages of completion. So he's planning on finishing, you know, the homes in there within a couple of months. So all the heavy equipment would be, would be out of there at that point. He'd be able to do the final paving and sidewalks and looming. I guess he's doing looming and seeding now on the lots that he's, he's already has occupied. So he feels comfortable that this would be the last extension he would need. He's planning on the fall town meeting. If not, it would be the next, you know, annual town meeting.
It's in the spring.
Right.
And when does his current covenant or approval expire?
June twenty-sixth.
Okay.
So this request would extend it to June twenty-sixth of twenty twenty-five. And then Sophie's Way is the other one, other subdivision. It would be up to the board if you wanted to request that interim. What, what did you call it, Richard? Is that town?
Uh, it's called. Progress. Progress is built plan.
Okay. So that's really the only active, you know, work that's going on at this point.
Do you think it's pertinent or necessary for, for a progressive as-built plan to be presented on a street that's not gonna be accepted to the town?
Well, yeah, it's true the town won't accept it. I guess the, the point would be to get a progress drawing on what's been done so far. If you thought that would be helpful.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I think that this might be better applied for the next case, if you will. In other words, any of the things that we just listed are things that are either underway or we've already given approval to. And I think the applicant had, would have assumed that the conditions that we asked for at the time that the approval was granted were those in place. And this was not mentioned in any one of those cases, I suspect. I mean, I can't speak to the Rocky Hill thing going back thirty years or so, but I suspect that we're kinda changing the rules, if you will, or something where the game has already started for those folks whose projects we've just enumerated. So I, I guess what I'm saying is, next guy in the door, that's part of the game.
Okay.
Where's this progress drawing thing coming from?
This is Town and Dudley Rules and Regulations governing the subdivision of land, which is apart from our subdivision rules and regulations. And this thing is rather lengthy.
And what's the purpose of having this plan?
What's the purpose of having this plan? Well, the purpose of having this plan is to be compliant with what is identified as the rules and regulations. the rules and regulations.
I'll tell you what I don't like about it, Mr. Chairman, is that, I understand it's in there and everything, but it doesn't even, it doesn't even stipulate at what points it's supposed to hap, you're supposed to request that?
Well, it.
How often do you get?
Upon installation of sewer, water, gas, and/or underground electrical systems, and prior to the installation of the pavement binder course, the subdivision shall submit to the planning board engineer or other designee of the board or the planning board office definitive data identifying location and elevation of all structures, services, and so on and so forth.
Oh, wait, so, so even before the binder course is down?
Yeah.
I mean, that could be, that could be on your, on your definitive plan when you, when you approve it.
Well, it is, all I'm saying is, it is here, and it exists. However, or whenever, or whoever put it in there, it is something that is identified as part of the rules and regulations.
So it's an extra, it's an extra drawing that the applicant would have to submit after his sewer, water, and utilities are in, but before he does his binder course?
Right. I mean, to me.
What is the purpose of it?
To me, the only thing that I think really matters is that you have an ASBIL plan before you submit it to the town.
Well, I think the purpose is to have the engineer verify that the utilities are installed according to the plan.
But then why, why make the applicant have a drawing done by his engineer to show that when our town engineer would look at the drawing and go, oh, this doesn't prove anything, I need to go in the field and look at it anyways?
Yeah, he would.
So then you send the engineer out, so then, do you really need the drawing? No, you don't. You send Jeff Walsh out, he looks at it, says, yep, the sewer's in, yep, the water's in, yep, the utilities are in. He reports back to the board, we get a report and says, it's all done.
Mr. Chairman, I would, excuse me, sorry, Mr. Chairman, I would submit that I don't think it's ours to decide whether this makes any sense, or this is practical or reasonable. It is something that is in place. If we don't like it, I think we have the option of trying to get it changed, but it is there, and the merits that it may or may not have, I don't think are part of our, should be part of our discussion.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would say that I can understand why we've been overlooking it, for lack of a better word, and not, or not enforcing it up until now, because it actually doesn't seem to make sense to me.
Well, I would submit that someone thought it made sense at some point, and I don't see signatures or names associated with it. We could probably track down its history if we wanted to, but it is, I mean, you've got all sorts of laws on the book, not only at the town level, but at the state level, that on first, you know, someone looking at them would say, that's preposterous, that's ridiculous, let's ignore it and forget about it. Well, that only works until somebody shows up with a badge.
I mean, I assume it's to prevent the applicant from having to undo work at the end of the project to correct mistakes in the laying out of the infrastructure. So if you have a plan that shows everything's been located, and then approved by the engineer, then there's no issue with you having to come back and undo stuff because it doesn't conform.
As case in point, a water line going to a hydrant that'll never work at Lions Estates?
Yeah.
So, as I was gonna say earlier, generally speaking, in construction, if you, you get an engineer drawings plan, they're not always 100%. They're not supposed to show exactly where the work is supposed to be installed, they're showing the basic of the idea, the, the design intent. The electrical contractor, HVAC contractor, can theoretically move, work, sprinkle pipes around how they see fit, or how the general contractor wants to make things work to make sure that everything stays at the proper height, and according to all the, the different regulations they have to follow as far as hydraulics and, and air movement. This is kind of the same thing. In theory, you have a set of drawings drawn by an engineer showing a system of water underground. There could be an obstacle in the way, there could be ledge someplace, there could be something else that had to get moved, moved around, lower, higher, who knows what. I think the intent of this ASBIL plan is to, hey, this is how we build it, town can look at it, approve, have the engineer look at it, but now it's a matter of record. So instead of having a pipe routed this way, and it's actually going this way, now the town is, everybody's aware of it. So it, it seems to me that at the end of the project, you're gonna do this anyway, right? So to have it as a progress thing for something that is, to your point, installed underground, now when you put the binder out, you don't have to rip everything apart in case something's found to be wrong, you're just simply a check on the work to make sure everything's according to plan, and hey, you can continue. So I don't have a big problem. When I first heard that you mentioned it, I was, I was thinking that it was of houses or driveway, and it just wasn't making any sense. But now when you talk about something that's underground, theoretically not visible at all, it starts to make a little more sense to me.
Just a point of information, it looks like this was last amended in February, this document, the entirety of it, if you will, or some parts of it, was amended on 27th of February 2017. And I assume that, I'm guessing that might have, have to have gone to town meeting for?
No. It's a planning board approval.
It's a planning board approval entirely. Okay.
I assume a former planner undertook those revisions, brought it to the board, and then the board approved it.
Do we have a Form H here, a blank one? Do we have a checklist?
Uh, no, I have it online. I have it on my laptop.
I would, I would love to see whether or not, before you get the binder code, whether or not it's actually on the Form H, because if it's not, and you want to do it, you need to put it on there.
Well, if it's not, I'm reading, my reading of this is it should be.
So, Mr. Chairman, last I heard, we were trying to get to Lions Estates and trying to figure out if we were gonna grant them an extension, and we got derailed like about seven times.
Yes, we did. Mr. Chairman, I would, if it's, it's in order or appropriate at this moment, or time rather, I would move that we grant the extension for Lions Estates, extend the time of completion to June 26 of 2025.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I will second.
Do we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? Okay, that's taken care of. Excuse me, going back to our agenda. Bill, you're gonna still look up the?
Yeah, I think my laptop might have lost power.
Form H, okay. If not, we can put that on our next agenda to check in the Form H to make sure that it's there. But next on our agenda for tonight, we have inspections, actions associated with sub, with site plans, excuse me, Legacy Landing, Country Club Acres, SEP Solar, Oxford Avenue, JD&amp;D 24 Oxford Avenue, Stevens Mill, Solar Project at the landfill, the Dudley Housing Authority. Do we have any updates on this?
I don't have any updates on this.
And planner's plate. Have anything on your planner's plate, Bill?
Yes, a couple of things. The first item is, we received notice that a new cell tower is going to be submitted for 55 Dudley Oxford Road, and under the zoning bylaw requires an applicant to come in for a pre-application meeting with the planning board, just to let the board know that an application will be forthcoming. So I did receive this email from James Valeriani, asking to appear before the board at his next meeting on June 26th, to just inform the board that he'll be coming in with the project, it's not the actual application, but just an informal discussion. So I'd like, you know, your approval to schedule him in for the 26th.
Did they give any, well, maybe, maybe we'll have that discussion on the 26th, but he didn't say like what kind of cell tower it would be?
This is the only information I have.
Okay.
It's near the existing solar farm across from the Shepherd Hill High School.
Okay.
On that side of the road?
On the other side of the road, well, the other side of the road from the high school.
The other side of the road from the high school.
Yeah.
And when the kids can use their cell phones during class. Good plan.
All right. The next item is interesting. No actions required by the board on this one either, but I thought you might want to know about it. So I received this letter today from the Mass Department of Agricultural Resources. It's directed to owners of property in Dudley, and the Meyers have property in an agricultural preservation restriction. And they broke off a piece of that property to add to existing land that they own to create a buildable lot. And it's a letter from Enbar saying that it's not permitted to take land, that's under an APR for development purposes. So he is ordering that, that plan be undone and reverted back to its previous status. And you can see that the map that came with this letter identifies the portion that was an APR, and was added to an existing property that has frontage on the road to create a buildable lot. And that's pursuant to an A&R plan that the planning board signed, I think it's dated 2019.
You can barely make it out.
Which shows that proposed lot. I believe the intent was to, you know, for the owner to provide a buildable lot to one of their children. That lot has not been built upon yet. It's still vacant, but it's a buildable lot as it currently exists. So I would suspect, although I can't verify, that the owner would have to come back for a planning board endorsement of an A&R to change this current configuration to what it was before.
So the A&R has approved, is Melvin Boyd.
I would say that's probably accurate. If they went ahead and tried to build on it, there would be difficulty with the state to do that.
It's the same.
Right.
So, well, it wouldn't be the first time that somebody built on one of these protected lots in Dudley. We just went through that whole thing not that long ago. I forgot what the name of the family was, but it was that one.
Well, let's hope it's never to happen again.
Remember, there were two, there were two houses that building permits were issued for that the general consensus was, those two houses never should have been built because those were, that was down around, I forget the name of the road, but, but anyway, so it's happened before. So my, my first question is, I, I think if it hasn't already been done, the building inspector needs to be made aware of this, like immediately, to make sure that he knows this. Because if they were to come in a week, two weeks, a month, and, you know.
I mean, I don't think that's likely now that they've got this letter, but I will let Nelson know.
Be on the safe side, though.
Exactly.
What's the old, the old adage, it's easier to ask forgiveness than permission?
Right.
Sometimes people operate under that assumption.
Sure, I'll forward this to them so that they know.
But isn't there, isn't there provision, if you put your, if you have an agriculturally protected piece of property, that, isn't there a provision that you could take it out of that, a piece of it out of agricultural protection and pay the taxes or the back taxes on it?
That's chapter 61.
That's chapter 61A.
Yeah.
An APR is considered permanently protection, and under Article 97, in order to remove land under this APR, they would need multiple approvals, including a vote of the state legislature to do that. So I doubt they would go that far for this purpose, but.
There's some provision by which you could do that, and you were liable for some number of years in back, in tax.
So that's 61, so it's 61A.
Fifty-five years or something to that effect, and I'm not sure of the exact number of it, but it was.
I think it's five years in agriculture, maybe 10 years in forestry, something like that.
Same intended to be large enough to keep you from doing it.
But this is more than 61A, this is an, this is a formal state-approved designation.
I understand.
So.
But we're, we're talking about, we're talking about less than an acre of land.
I would say it's about right.
Okay. All right. Thank you for the information, Bill. Anything else on planner's plate?
Nope.
Okay. Comments from the planning board?
I'll pass.
Okay. Comments from the audience?
Only one of us passed.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Let me, let me reset that.
I would like to welcome Mr. Wetroba to the, to the seat that he is, is currently sitting in. It's kind of like old furniture, come back into the house again, if you would. But welcome back to the planning board, Mr. Wetroba, and thank you to Mr. Shinaki for his service over the years, and we move on.
Thank you very much, Richard, and I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank the voters for returning me back to the, to the seat, and I guess I did have one other thing, but I'm gonna defer, if Dan had something for.
I'm just gonna echo the previous comments, you know, just wanted to thank Mr. Shinaki, was good working with him over the couple of years, that I was, we were on the planning board together, and Steve, we were on the planning board before, and wanted it again, so good to have you back.
Right, great to have the band back together.
I was gonna say, maybe, I think the Board of Selectmen has some kind of like certificate that they send out to people who served on various boards, maybe we could get one of those certificates and send it out to Mr. Shinaki and thank him.
There is a letter that they.
Yeah, thanking him for his service.
And then the other item I just wanted to mention, I don't know if anybody, did anybody happen to catch the last Board of Health meeting? There was a discussion apparently about a PFAS situation now up on the property, up on Fish Road?
No.
Yeah, so I'm not sure this is kind of like really premature, but it's something we should just be aware of, because I know we had talked about some of the things that were going, we had a special permit, right, for the, for something.
Now, that pit was not subject to the special permit and subdivision approval that the planning board gave, that was a different piece of property.
Okay, all right. Because I know that they were talking about now that people are concerned about their wells, and I remember that specifically, there was talk about that there was a well on that property, and that the well would be used for that.
Okay.
Project.
Right.
So that, you may, you may recall, you granted an extension for the special permit not long ago for that growth facility.
Right.
And the subdivision approval extension is, will be coming up next year.
Okay.
There was a three-year approval, I think, for that. So if you had any concerns, I suppose that would be the time to.
Okay, well, hopefully it'll be worked out by then, as far as, I think it's very early now to know what the extent of the PFAS exposure is gonna be, if there's gonna be any other wells affected in that area.
Okay.
Seems like that dirty four-letter word keeps popping up more and more often.
That, that whole issue is really not a planning board matter, it's, I believe it's DEP-approved site, so it's a state-regulated facility.
All right, just getting back, we skipped over minutes for May 29.
Excuse me, do we have a gentleman here, comments from the audience?
We'll, we'll get to that. I'm gonna go back to minutes, because it was on new business, and we skipped over it because we didn't have a quorum for that, so.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I would vote, I'll make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes from May 29, 2023, as presented.
We have a motion for the May 29 meeting minutes, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
I have to abstain on June 3, so I can't make a motion there.
Okay, so on June 3, it was just myself and Mr. Edmondson.
That's with the, yep.
Any other room, so, I've read them over, they looked okay to me, if you would like to make a motion, and I can second it.
Bill, there's only two of us voting, though, so we need to have Dave here, don't we?
No, we, two is a quorum.
There's only two there, right?
Yeah, there's three there, but two would be a quorum, so.
Understood. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the minutes from the June 3, 2024 meeting as presented?
I'll second that, and I'm in favor.
Aye.
And the two of us, so we have an exemption, exemption for Mr. Clark and Mr. Wetroba, because they weren't present.
Sign them up.
I got them all right here, Bill.
Got them all right there.
We just gotta figure out which ones they are. So this is, this is May 29. May 29, okay, so these two here.
I can sign May, but not June.
Right. These are the changes.
May back at you.
This is a, this is a A, yeah.
Okay.
Give those back.
There we go.
Give them to Or. Okay, now, that business is taken care of, now we have comments from the audience, and we have an audience.
Yes.
Thank you.
My name's Bob Andrews, thank you, gentlemen, for your time. I'm a new Dudleyite, I guess I'd say, if that's what you call people.
Welcome.
What's that?
Welcome.
Thank you.
I think you, you do need to sign in, though.
Yeah, if you don't mind, just give us your name and address.
Yep. I live at number five, Power Five Lane now.
Oh.
One, Country Club Acres, I believe it is, LLC.
Yeah, for only Legacy Landing, right?
Yep. My question for the board is, is there a bond being held by the town against, for the builder?
No, I don't think so.
He was allowed to build that project without a bond?
I believe so.
Ah, that's, that's disappointing. Is there some way that you can hold him for completion before allowing them to release it to the, to the committee or their so-called...
Mr. Chairman, I think I have to recuse myself from this discussion.
Oh.
I, I'm a butter, so I...
Oh, all right. Anyway, the, the point being is, there are numerous things that, that aren't complete there, as you're probably well aware. But more importantly, I keep getting pink slips from the town of Dudley for taxes that the builder owes. But now that I'm the owner of the lot, the lot, the town sees it that, that it's my responsibility to get that paid. And I don't know how that, in, in this world, that that could be true, but I've come down here numerous times. People in the offices are fantastic. The assessor sent me a copy of the letter, said this is the builder's portion that's due on the lot. This was your portion. I paid 100%. Now I'm getting pink slips from the town of Dudley Tax Collector, saying this portion's owed on this lot, and now penalties are being assessed. So now it's affected my credit rating. Now, you know, I go to the builder, I submit the letters back to them, and I'm still getting letters from the town of Dudley. So I need either you guys to write a letter to the builder, or the town to write a letter to the builder, or somebody to make the builder pay their portion of the tax that should never show up on my record as unpaid.
Are all the occupancy permits for all the houses approved?
Yep, it's 100% occupied right now.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, he's not talking about the property tax for his unit. He's talking about the property tax for the underlying property?
For the, for the land that the unit was built on prior to him taking ownership of it.
Right, right.
So the, the builder did not pay the property tax on the land before the unit was built?
And how was he allowed to proceed?
Yeah, because there's a condo association that was created.
Yes, correct.
And aren't they responsible for the common areas?
They're responsible for it, yes.
So how is the developer then responsible for that?
The developer owns, owns the property until I take ownership of it.
So the common land hasn't been transferred to the association yet?
The association has not taken over the development.
I see.
And nor should they until it's complete.
And he pays his fair share of the taxes.
Yeah.
Because to get a building permit, you have to go to every, you have to go to every office.
You shouldn't believe that the, everything's been paid.
Right, and get it, and get it.
Or else that he should have stopped.
I guess we should check the condo master deed and...
Yeah, I was just gonna say the master deed should spell out.
Right. Who's responsible for the taxes until it's fully accepted.
Isn't that true, Bill, that like if you want to get a building permit, you have to go to the, you have to go to every department to make sure that there's no taxes? Or just like when people come to us for, for an A&R plan, where you have to get a, you have to get a signature from the, from the treasurer saying that they don't owe the town any taxes?
Right, yeah. I know in the subdivision, that's how it works.
Yeah.
Can't even hold like, can't even have, the developer of record can't even have like an overdue sewer bill or property tax bill on other property he owns in town and be allowed to move forward if he hasn't paid that.
Okay.
One other item, and it may not be for this board, maybe it's for the, the highway department. But I know in the town laws that a driveway can't have more than a 6% slope. Well, I invite you all to come pull into my driveway and get out of your vehicle and see if you can not fall down.
What, what, what number are you at?
Number five.
Number five?
Yep. So two times this winter, my wife's Jeep Grand Cherokee, after she exited the vehicle, slid down into the road. So I did the calculus, and it's, for my numbers, it's about 14%.
That's been a sticking point in the past, as far as, not, not just this property, but I mean, 6%.
I was, I was thinking after the last one on, was it Prospect Street or Progress?
Yeah.
One of those.
Progress.
Right.
Progress. I was thinking after that, that when people come to, I mean, I know that's not in our jurisdiction. It goes to the Board of Selectmen because it's a highway, it's a highway.
Was the highway, highway surveyor would issue the driveway permit?
Right, but when people, when people come in for a driveway permit, they should be handed, they should be handed that zoning bylaw explicitly so that they know that they have to follow this. Because otherwise, you know, we're, we're assuming they're taking the responsibility of going and reading the bylaws, and obviously they're not, because we've had this happen multiple times. And that's why the bylaw is in existence, to try to stop this from happening. But if the developers aren't reading it, then...
Well, really, it should be caught by the highway superintendent to identify if the driveway doesn't comply.
But the, they don't typically inspect that until the end, after it's built.
Yeah, that's, that's the problem. When the curb cut is applied for, lots of times you're just looking at the raw land at that point. It's kind of hard to know where, where it's gonna be. In other words, devil's, I'm playing devil's advocate. If I'm, if I'm the highway superintendent, and I go out and I look at that property that I've, I've been requested to give a driveway permit to, I'm looking at the property, I would be assuming that whatever grade I'm seeing there is gonna be changed to conform with the 6% once they roughen the driveway.
Well, I mean, he should, he, you know, he should catch it.
And you don't even know the elevations until you get the foundation in.
Right.
So...
Do they inspect every driveway in the subdivision?
I don't think so.
I believe it's part of the building permit package. They need to get a driveway permit.
Yeah, but I mean, as far as, I think his question would be...
They can, they can hold up an occupancy permit if the driveway's not to the standard that they want it to. I know that for a fact.
Yeah, the problem is, that's, that's like a little too late then, the house is built. Case in point, what we were just talking about over there. Yeah, I mean, that, that was like, how are you gonna undo, how are you gonna unring that bell? But at some point, you would have the elevation of the foundation to go by and make and...
Well, it wouldn't necessarily be the foundation. It would be your elevation of your garage floor to the road, in the length of your driveway.
Right, and if it's a drive under garage, it's gonna be different, so...
I mean, I would think there'd be a, a plan that would show the grades, you know, for each building.
Yeah, I mean, they have to, they have to...
So I'm surprised that it's not caught at the, you know, the occupation stage.
They should be, they should all work into a benchmark someplace.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, I know I've recused myself, but let's say as a resident, if I may, a question. Would there be written record or dated record of some inspection that should have taken care of or addressed this issue? I mean, if someone is taking, making the effort to inspect that, I would think that that record would be maintained at some point.
Should there be a copy of the permit, yeah?
Yeah. But again, I think it's gonna fall under the jurisdiction of the highway superintendent in the, in the Board of Selectmen, because they're the, they're the road commissioners.
I think the last one went to Zoning Board of Appeals, didn't it?
Because they didn't meet the bylaw.
Yeah, and, and I don't, I don't think it ever got to the selectmen or any...
No, the developer got a, the developer got a...
Got away.
Got a variance, or what, a variance or a...
Where was this?
The one on Progress.
Yes, that's right, yeah. He did go back and get a variance from the...
He got a variance from the Board of, from the...
CBA.
CBA, yeah.
Well, they have like 21 to 16 different waivers, and you were kind enough to give me a copy of at least 16 of them.
The driveway was not a waiver that would have been given.
Okay. I couldn't, I couldn't pull it out of the 16 that...
No, that would, that would never be, you know. We have that bylaw for a reason, because it's, it's, it's other houses in town. If you drive around, you could find them that have, you know, ski slopes out of the garage door.
Yeah.
So, but it sounds like you got one, too.
I do.
Just not as long.
Nope, it's not long enough at all. That's, that's part of the problem.
Well, thank, go ahead. Mr. Chairman, I'm just curious, when you were looking, when you were shopping and went in there, and you were looking at the units, this wasn't built yet, so you couldn't see the grade? Is that what?
That's correct.
Okay, yeah.
Now, granted, we, we did sign, you know, the, the final purchase and sale, so part of that's on us. But I didn't find the, the required until later on. And I was assuming that it was inspected.
Well, your issue with the driveway, I walk through there some regularity. Yours wouldn't be the only one, I don't think, that had that issue.
Maybe my neighbor beside me, but we're the only two that would, would definitely exceed the, the 6%.
So it's just the, so as you're coming in, FA Port Road, you're to the right.
Yep, you take that first right.
And then going down further towards the...
On the last house, all the way.
No, I'm, I'm saying going down and not making the right, but going straight, let's say towards the church property, for example, in the background. Looks to the right, there looked maybe a unit there that seems a little, I don't know, six?
Maybe. Maybe right at six, but certainly not ski slope.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, I think it's unfixable because of the length of those driveways.
There is no length to driveways.
Yeah, how do you correct the grade?
I mean, your, your Jeep probably took up 95% of that driveway right there.
I drive a Ram 1500, and I can't, if the garage door is closed, my bumper's in the road.
Yeah, there's no, there is no driveway.
The only way you could fix that, and it would be significant, significant cost to the builder.
Raise the road.
Raise the road and put in the, the proper storm drainage. But that's, I bet he'd fight that tooth and nail.
It's not gonna happen again.
But I just wanted to bring it to your attention, because somehow that got through the cracks. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, it says our next regular scheduled meeting will be June 26.
I will be on vacation. I will not be in attendance.
Okay. I'm going on vacation on June 28th, so I guess I will be here.
All right. We do have it.
Okay, we don't have any invoices. No invoices? Any town notices?
Just the results of the election that you've already talked about?
Yeah.
Guy, you were re-elected?
Yeah.
Steven was elected back to the board?
I demand a recount.
Not yet. So we will reorganize at the next meeting.
Okay.
Hopefully, well, maybe not, because Dan, you won't be here. So we should probably have a full board in order to reorganize. Okay?
It'll happen eventually.
Yeah, I mean, you go away.
Okay. Yeah, we'll just, until we get a full, you know, until we have a full board, that's fine.
If you only have four members, you would do it?
No, we can do it, I said we can go until we have a full board.
Okay, fine, yeah.
That's fine. And no other correspondents?
I do have a question, Mr. Chairman. In regard to correspondence, I had mentioned on several occasions, I had a letter dated on or about April 16th that went to the Selectmen. I've read the letter several times, and my hope was that there'd be something in there that would require a response from the Selectmen. There is absolutely nothing that requires a response. We're basically on our knees, asking that we be allowed to participate in the planning discussions with the town. We're almost begging, if you will, to somehow have some relevance and have a voice and have some involvement. The, I, the, the letter does not address the issue which I thought was the town, town administrator's comment that the work of the planning board slash Complete Streets Committee was completed. This letter does not address that in any way, shape, or form. He effectively put us out of business, and this is just asking that somehow we be allowed to continue or to be involved. That's all it really does. And there is nothing in there that, again, would require them to send us any kind of a response, whether it ever, I don't believe it ever showed up on their agendas. I don't recall any mention of it in any of their meetings. It is addressed specifically to the chair. If he read it to the members of the Board of Selectmen, it may have been an executive session, or he may not have even bothered with that.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would say at this point, I think we should just continue doing what we've been doing. We're gonna go ahead, and we're gonna still have Complete Streets. We're gonna still go for grant applications and whatnot, and just continue to function. And at this point, I think if he's not gonna respond, I think we should just accept that he's got nothing to say on the matter.
Well, I...
And we just push forward and do what we do.
I agree with you, Mr. Watroba. I don't think that's the best situation in terms of the Planning Board slash Complete Streets Committee.
Well, we can't hold them down and force them to acknowledge this.
No, no, we can't. And that's, 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 that's the, if you will, fait accompli. That's where we are with this. It is a dead letter at this point, and this is a dead letter.
Okay. So let's move on.
Move on, or move over, at least.
If they were gonna do anything, they, they would have acted by now, so I think they're just accepting the standard quo.
Oh, definitely. I mean, this has been, just as I experienced in that meeting in March, this is equally ignored.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if it's appropriate, I would make a motion that we adjourn.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Thank you, everyone. Good night.